All right, folks. We're ready to get started and this is a great occasion. All right. Sal Quintero, thank you for bringing this order to meeting. That was fantastic. All right, folks, welcome to the Fresno City Council Meeting of January 5th, 2017. So, Madam Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Baines.
Here.
Former Councilmember Brand.
For the last time, you.
Councilmember Brandal.
Here.
Councilmember Olivier. Former Councilmember Quintero.
And Supervisor-elect Sal Quintero.
Yes. Woo, Sal!
Councilmember Soria. President Capriolio.
I am here. Thank you.
Folks, next is the invocation by Reverend Michelle Raxton. Are you hearing me? Oh, good morning. Thank you for being here this morning. We appreciate it. So with that, if we would all please stand and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Most Holy and Gracious One, we give you thanks for the many blessings you have bestowed upon this city, for the rich diversity of people and cultures in our city which gives rise to its riches, for the abundance of natural resources, and for a spirit of renewal. We are grateful for the vision of our founding fathers who provided for an electoral process and who helped fashion our democracy. And today, we give you thanks for the election and inauguration of Lee. Give him grace and wisdom in the exercise of his duties, create in him an open heart, the ability to listen deeply, and a spirit of cooperation with those whom he serves. Fill him with courage and the foresight to provide for the needs of our people and to fulfill our obligations in the community. And finally, teach us to accept our responsibility to our fellow citizens, that we may elect and support trustworthy leaders and make wise decisions for the well-being of our society so that we may make our city and our land a better place for generations to come. We pray this in your loving name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend, very much. Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag by Dan Payne, United States Marine Corps, retired.
Ready? Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Dan. Reverend, thank you for being here this morning and starting our meeting off in such good ways. Before we get to the agenda, I have some sad news, and that is regarding Luis Chavez, the newly-elected. And this is a statement he asked me to read. "Due to the family health emergency, I'm unable to attend today's swearing-in ceremonies. I want to congratulate our new mayor, Lee Brand, and councilmembers Steve Brandal, Paul Capriolio, and Gary Brederfield as they begin their new terms in office. I'm looking forward to our first meeting on January 12th and to serving with my fellow councilmembers as we begin our new year." So our prayers and thoughts and hopes go out to Luis Chavez and his family. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? If there is, please punch up.
I have no changes.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Member Baines. And I'll second it. All those in favor? And, you know, folks, I forgot a very important part of our program, and that was Laura Rios, my chief of staff, and now you know why she's my chief of staff. She has to remind me often of things. So we're going to do a -- this is unusual, but this is unusual in great days. So we're going to do a presentation of "The Star-Spangled Banner" by Brianna Padilla. Round of applause, please.
Do it all, please, stand. (SINGING) Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner wave O'land of the free and the home of the brave?
That was a -- I want to be your agent. You know, folks, thank you all, Reverend, and Dan, and Ms. Padilla, for being here and celebrating this moment, not only for us, but those moments are for all the men and women that served in the military. And we thank them, and we bless them, and we hope they return home safely, and that's all part of this. So thank you all very much. All right. It's my last day as president, so I can't wait to get through this, so pardon me. I'm running a little faster than usual. So I love my job. Okay. We pass the agenda. Next is the --
Excuse me, Council President. I think we still need to vote. We have a motion and a second.
Oh, okay. Thank you. We have a motion by Member Baines, seconded by me. All those in favor? Folks, this happens often. Now, city attorney, can they vote on this issue?
No, they can abstain. It would pass five to two, then.
Then it would be five to two with two abstentions by my colleagues. All right. Next, we're going to approve the city council meetings of -- well, excuse me, we'll go back one minute here. For unscheduled communications, would any member of the public like to speak on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council? You'll have two minutes. If you wish to speak to the council and the public, please come forward to the microphone and give us your name and date of birth -- no, just kidding. Name and address. Anyone wish to come forward now? That's mandated by our charter, by the way, folks, that we bring in unscheduled communication. Next, we'll go to the city council meetings. Oh, thank you. If you give us your name and address, and you'll have two minutes. Thank you for being here.
What do I say? What do I provide?
Oh, your name and address, and then you'll have two minutes.
Brandy News, Vegas, 713 East Andrews Avenue, Fresno, California, 937-48. Ah, sorry, I'm new to this for the city. But I just wanted to speak briefly, just asking for the council and the mayor's support for protection and continued improvement in helping the homeless in our community. I'm connected with an incredible organization, Homeless in Fresno, that has been working with relationships with the homeless, and there's been a lot of people in the community that were working to help the homeless over the holidays. But one thing we realize is that there is a lack of warming centers and a lack of shelters. There's only, I think, at most, over maybe 150 -- 125 spaces when a warming center is open in Fresno, and we have many that are homeless. And likewise, there were homeless that were moved and had their items taken during the holidays when they were asked to move, and some of those items were things that were given to them, including sleeping bags, tents, and things like that. And our concern is making sure that they are protected and that the city seeks ways to be able to help protect the homeless in the community and work with those who are working directly with the homeless. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who wants to come forward and address the council? Good morning, sir. Please give us your name and address. You have two minutes.
Good morning. My name is Philip Barrow, and my address is 5130 North Weshawn in Fresno, 93704. I am working with a group that is a consortium of organizations that address hunger in Fresno. So it's the Community Food Bank, it's Pavarino House, Catholic Charities, and a number of other organizations. And we call ourselves the Fresno Food Security Network. We're drafting a resolution that we'll be presenting to the council and to the Board of Supervisors. So we're not going to let Councilman Quintero get off the hook here. So this will be both a joint resolution for the county and City of Fresno to President Trump, who will be Trump President by the time the resolution gets to him, I'm sure. And it will be saying, one, make the application and enrollment process for food stamps, also known as Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, SNAP, also known as CalFresh. Make that process simpler, more user-friendly, and then provide an increase, provide an increase in this food stamp program. People will be very hard-pressed this next three or four years as some things will be cut back. And so they're going to have less cash for food, and that's what our resolution addresses. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public or our community wish to come forward? This is the perfect opportunity to address us. All right, seeing none, we'll bring you back up here to the council. Are there any changes to the minutes of December 15th, 2016? I see no changes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Motion by Member Olivier, seconded by Member Brandal. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes five-two with two abstentions. All right. Next, we're going to ceremonial. We have some ceremonial items here in recognition of outgoing councilmembers, and it involves me and my colleagues. All right, folks, this is really, really fun part of our program. The whole day's going to be exciting and a lot of fun. So just a few comments to first to Sal Quintero, as I usually greet Sal. Good to see you, Godfather. Good to see you, Godfather. He is the Godfather of the council, and we love him, and he's got such a historical perspective on things. He's an incredible asset to our community. We're going to miss you. They've got a great asset, and you coming over with your knowledge and information and enthusiasm for the City of Fresno. Clerk, did you want to say a word or two? Not yet?
Just that we have some special gifts for Sal and also for Lee, and so I can help Council President Capriolio pass those out. Sal, I just wanted to echo what -- oh, there you are. I wondered where you were, all of you. I just wanted to -- and I know that everyone's going to say something, and I know that everyone has the different stories, but what Cap said is really true. Sal is the institutional memory of this body. Sal has been with us since a long time ago. He started in the early '90s. His staff was elected, went back to staff, was elected again. He's done a lot of good for the people of Southeast Fresno, and he remains very, very popular there. And his neighbors have rewarded him with an even tougher assignment in many ways over at the county. So, Sal, thank you for all the times I've dropped by your office to talk about your collection of campaign pins. Thank you for the advice you've given me on great things to try to do in my district, and just thanks for being there for me. And so for you, we have a commemorative clock that you can take over to your new, smaller office at the county building, at the much older county building. But this clock is for you, and thanks from a grateful city for your service. So thank you very much.
We've got a mic over there.
Well, there's an extra one here, so we just took it for us over here.
Don't tell Chief Dyer that. He'll be right up here grabbing that mic.
Hey, Sal, you know, I got to say, so we have a very special relationship, this council does. A lot of you out here that are here know that, that we're all very close. And Sal's been a part of our team. You know, I've been able to work with him for the last six years. And a couple of things about Sal, and I'm probably not going to say anything that many of you don't know, but Sal is one of the most loyal people that I know. When Sal gives you his word, his word is bond. His yes means yes, and his no means no. And I could always count on Sal for that, and I appreciate that. Sal's never let me down. He's always been a friend, always been thoughtful. He's probably one of the most thoughtful councilmembers on this dais. He always remembers special anniversaries or special days for not just us, but for all of you out there. Sal is an excellent councilmember, and some of you have heard me say this. I've told Sal this before, my first couple of years here, when Sal and I were elected together. I think my first time and maybe his second time, but many of you don't know that Sal's the kind of councilmember that if you call him, he comes to your house personally. And he sits on the couch with you. He's going to have a cup of coffee with you. His staff doesn't go. He returns all of his own phone calls. He does all of his own scheduling. This is the most personal-touch elected official that I know and that I've ever had the pleasure of working with. And I've often said that if I didn't represent myself as a councilmember, that's the councilmember I would want to represent me. Sal is a fantastic public servant, and you will be missed, my friend.
I just want to echo some of the same words that my colleague have really expressed. I think I'm going back to probably the first week that I was here on council. I did get a chance to sit down with Sal as one of the first people, and just the institutional knowledge and memory. And I appreciate all those comments, even when we're in closed session or up on the dais, bringing back the history, which provides the context to why we are where we're at today. Very, very important. So I do want to just, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for the words of wisdom that you provided and for all the knowledge that you shared with us. And I just want to congratulate you as you move on to the county board, and I look forward to working together. Our districts overlap, and so there's a lot of work to continue to do, city and county. So again, I just look forward to working hard and getting things done, and congratulations.
Hey, Sal, since you were there, I need -- I've always -- I've always -- thank you. Thank you. Since you were there, I've always wanted to get the final answer on this. Was the Tyrannosaurus Rex really that bad? Because you see it in movies, they're really bad. Okay, okay. Sal, you took a vote. You led us in a vote. It was unanimous about a little over a year ago about protecting school districts in District 5. Remember that? School playgrounds. It had to do with gangs infiltrating the local school playgrounds and so forth. Sal was not going to put up with that. He drafted a policy. I think we all voted on it unanimously. That's an example of just a great councilmember taking care of the constituents of District 5, but in all reality, extending it across the City of Fresno. So that kind of service has been fantastic. So I really appreciate working with you for the last four years.
What is this makeup today? Boots? Who's the old-school guy, huh? Sal and I really probably go back to junior high, high school. It's a long, long road for both of us, and it's been a pleasure, an absolute pleasure. Lose my voice here. The best day, right? And Sal, you've been a great guy to work with. He is the resident historian for the Fresno City Council. He's got every article written the last 30 years, including a rezone collection. But it was a great pleasure to work with you, Sal. We accomplished lots, and even when we disagreed, it was always a collegial relationship. He was always a friend, like the rest of you. I would dearly miss you, but I look forward to our new relationship with you on the board and me as the mayor of Fresno and to forge a totally better and closer relationship between Fresno City and Fresno County. Thank you, Sal. You know, Sal, there isn't much I could add to that, other than you'll always be the Godfather. All right, next, a colleague of mine, and we went to high school together. We're Rough Riders, those little high schools right here in Fresno, and we've come a long way. And who'd have thought back then that we'd be up here? I thought we'd both be probably in jail or an institution, so, you know, something like that. So on behalf of the City of Fresno and your colleagues here at the council, we want to say we'll miss you. We're not going to be far. We're going to be down at your office all the time. You know that. And we look forward to working with you, but as an outgoing councilmember, we have a fantastic little gavel for you and the recognition of your service to Fresno City and to all the things that you've done for us and our colleagues. Would you like to start, Steve, with some comments?
Yeah, I sure would. About six years ago, really, when I considered running for city council, the very first person I spoke to was Lee. He said, "Yeah, you know, that's an interesting proposition." So we met at Uncle Harry's. Remember that, Lee? And really, since that day, Lee's been a great mentor to me on many issues. And he's calmed me down. I've got a tendency to go kind of off the chart a little bit. He's -- yeah, no, no, not you, Brandal. But Lee's had, you know, Lee's reeled me in a couple of times, talked to me about what it means to be a councilman and work together and work on behalf of the City of Fresno. Just a lot of good things over the years, Lee, and I really appreciate that. I'm going to carry that on for the next four years, and I'm going to be working with you for the next four years as you're the mayor. And so I really look forward to that, and I appreciate the bond that we have.
So I just want to, you know, congratulate you on ending your service here with the council, but then also in beginning a new chapter in your life and in the life, really, of the City of Fresno. Congratulations again. I know in the short time that I've been here, in the two years, we've had an opportunity to have some very healthy debate. I appreciate your thoughtfulness and really your consideration when we're going through the policymaking process. That's the thing that I love doing the most, and I know that when I get a chance to meet with you, I know that I will get that. So I definitely appreciate it. I look forward to continuing to have those healthy debates as we work hard together to move the city forward. And so again, I just want to congratulate you and look forward to working with you.
So I got to figure out right now, are we talking him as a councilmember, former councilmember, mayor? Are we going to get a chance to say something else, Mr. President?
I abstain.
Or do we just say everything right now? No?
No, we definitely will. This is an outgoing councilmember presentation.
Well, listen, I'll say this. I feel like one of the luckiest guys the last six years. This has been a fantastic time in my life to work with great people, and, you know, you just heard me talk about Sal, who I think is probably one of the finest, just public, you know, rare and finest public servants that I've had the pleasure to serve with. And, you know, I feel very, very strongly about you, Councilmember Mayor Brand, Esmeralda hit the nail on the head, probably one of the most thoughtful and conscientious policymakers on this dais. And when I first came on, really showed me the ropes of how to be a councilmember, quite like you, Steve. When I first was elected, Lee was the council president, and so I had the opportunity to sit next to him. And if you all understood the care and the methodical nature at which he approaches every issue, we'd all have a lot more appreciation for him. He's very thoughtful. He's a problem solver. He taught me how to read an agenda, how to think about a policy matter, how to do that, and I can't --
I spend hundreds of hours.
And how to spend hundreds of hours on a topic, that's for sure. But I thank you, my friend, for your mentorship to me. I consider you a dear friend and a colleague, and I really, really look forward to working with you on the other side. I think that I'll say something else about your mayoral service, but I enjoy working with you as a councilmember.
Lee, thank you. You know, before you came to council, you did eight years on our planning commission, and then you did eight years on the council. It's all prepared you for where you're headed next, and we're also happy for you. But just on a personal note, I have had the privilege of sitting next to you in council meetings for the past six years. And I know Oliver brought it up and Steve, but you have mentored so many of us, and you have been a father figure to me, and you have big brother to me. Oops, sorry. And I know that that's been a byproduct of your style of leadership. You, with the help of many others, helped save this organization from bankruptcy. And in the deepest, darkest days, when the City of Fresno was, you know, what they like to call a going concern, it was Lee Brand who took a step back, took a deep breath, and helped guide this council and guide this city toward financial health. And he did it all. He's very cool. He's very calm. He's a steady hand. And if I ever had a question on a complicated issue, or if I ever just needed somebody to talk to, there he was, next to me, or on the phone, or at lunch. So, Lee, thank you for your mentorship and your friendship, and thank you for what you've done for the residents of the City of Fresno on the council. And now it's on to bigger and better, where you're going to be able to apply those principles and apply your steady hand to the City of Fresno and make it an even better place than it is now. So thank you very much for your service, Lee.
You know, standing up here, I notice that this is the first time, this is another first time in history, three guys that grew up in Southeast Fresno were on the council. So, you know, that's a -- I think that's a great accomplishment, too, how we were raised, I guess. But, Lee, I want to thank you for all your hard work, and I know you put in a lot of time being on the planning commission, a lot of time away from your family and running your own business, and you've worked hard. And I'm just really proud to have served with you. You've done a great job, and I know working with the administration, the mayor's office, and helping, being a big part of saving our city from bankruptcy, that was huge. It was huge, and we applaud you for that. We're going to miss you, but I look forward to working with you, continuing our work. So our story's still going on.
Well, I can only join in all those comments without repeating them and all. But you know what? As a council member, I had the godfather on this side. And I had my grand, I mean, my big brother on this side. And I couldn't go wrong without these two. They're, they're there for me and all of us, and for the city of Fresno for so many years. And we're so thankful for both of you and look forward to your continued leadership. And Lee, there it is, buddy. You deserve it. I'm going to keep my comments short, because you hear me again. You know, three or four months ago, I didn't know if I'd be here, leaving the council as an ex-council member and leaving City Hall, or leaving and becoming the next mayor. So it's definitely better to be the next mayor. But for every one of you, I consider you my colleagues and my personal friends. And it's made a lot to me, meant a lot to me. These moments I'll never forget. And I thank you all for being part of the, a process that made Fresno City government. And thank you, Mayor Swearengen, too, for being part of that team. You and I were here the entire eight years for making this a better city. Thank you. All right, Clay.
And as the incoming council president, it's usually your duty traditionally to recognize the outgoing council president. I was council president in 2012. And it, it's a lot of ceremonial. You have to sit up here and you have to run the meeting. But there's also a lot of work that you have to do behind the scenes. It's, it means more meetings. It means taking constituent calls from folks who, who don't know who their council district is, or they, they need some extra help. They go, they're referred to the president. Your social schedule explodes, because you're cutting every ribbon in, in the whole city. And you're showing up to so many more events. And so it's, it's really a lot of, of an extra demand on your time. But it's really an honor, if you're someone who, who gets to do it. It's something that you, you really want to have that opportunity, because it's, it's a great honor to have in, in a city of the size of Fresno. So President Capriolio has been the hardest-working council president that I have seen since I've been here, and that's six years. His, his car is, is always here. He works very hard. He's always got a box of, of papers. And, and he's always walking fast. Cap walks fast. And that is because he, he's busy and he has a lot to do. But despite the fact that he was busy, he always took the time. Hey, you know, he was one of those guys, open door policy. You can just go in. I need this. I need that. I need this. He, he kept all the plates spinning. He did an amazing job for us. And so we have a gift to present to him. And what we did was, we framed his name tag, and then we all signed, we all gave him a message of thanks on his name tag. So I'm not going to read these, because, no, they're all good. But on, on behalf of the council, thank you for your service. Thank you for what you did. Thank you for always making time to, to help us get our stuff on the agenda, or keep other people's stuff off the agenda. Thank you so much for, for, thank you so much for what you've done on behalf of the city of Fresno. So thank you, Paul. Does anyone want to wish to say anything, or that was adequate?
Well, as the, the, the council president that preceded, Councilmember Capriolio, I take real offense to what Councilmember Olivier just said about the hardest-working council. I'm like, you know, you know, the, the closest comparison you had was me. So obviously you said, no, I'm, no, I'm kidding. I'm really kidding. President Capriolio has been a fantastic council president. And I'll tell you, it's not, it's not a very easy job. We're, we're like herding cats. And, and all the seven of us know that. And I can remember when, the day he assumed the mantle, I said, you know, by, you know, May or June, you're going to be ready to throw this council presidency back. And he goes, "No, no, I love it." And I said, "Just trust me, Cap. We're going to run you crazy." And sure enough, I think right after budget, he's like, "I'm ready to be done with you guys." And he said, "You guys are crazy." But it's difficult. And so I joined in Councilmember Olivier's remarks, and you did a great job. He kept the meeting running. He kept us on time. He made sure our remarks were, were short and concise and to the point. Cap doesn't allow us to blubber too much. He, he'll send us a little note that says we're blah, blah, blah-ing. So some of you have heard about the blah, blah, blah award. Well, it was invented by Council President Capriolio. So we're all very conscious to do our very best to not get it. And me and Esmeralda seem to get it all the time. But, but Cap, great job leading us. It's difficult leading a group like us. We, we, you know, we have to allow you to do it. And it was, it's been my honor and my pleasure to work with you, my friend.
I'll just keep mine very short. I don't want to get the blah, blah, blah award today. But no, I do want to just say, congratulations on wrapping up the year, a successful year, I believe. Thank you for putting up with us. For, and I think Laura also, for getting us out here on the floor. So thank you, Laura. And really keeping, you know, the, the council meetings going. I want to thank you for being flexible. I know there are many times that I asked you to be flexible on the schedule. And so I do appreciate all the hard work that you put in this last year. And it has been a great, just great times working with you and being next to you. So you'll be missed.
Cap, Paul runs, Paul, at 8:30 or 9 o'clock, the gavel goes down, right? It's the first time in history, really. I haven't seen, I wasn't able to pull it off. My successor wasn't able to pull it off. But Capriolio, he gets us moving on time. And when we start taking too long, like probably even right now, he gives us a glance like, "Are you going to cut it loose?" So we're on a very tight ship. And I know towards the end of the year, when you get worn out, really, the meetings increase in intensity, because there's a lot of stuff to get done towards the end of the year. So I know the last couple of months have been a jam, but you handled them perfectly, and I appreciate you, Cap.
Ditto, you're a great guy.
And we have a special gift for, for Paul's chief of staff, Laura Rios. Laura, where are you? We have something for you. And it's just a little token of, of our appreciation to say thank you for the hard work that you've put in and that you've done. I know that being the chief of staff to the council president is extra, extra work. And Cap was very easy to work for, and it was an easy year, right? And so, in recognition of your service, please accept this bouquet of flowers from, from the city of Fresno for, and, and thank you for what you've done. Thank you. At, at this time.
Oh, I was just going to say thank you all.
Go ahead, please.
Well, you're the incoming. I don't want to go for the wrong friend. Anyway, this is a great group of people. We have such diverse backgrounds. There's commonality with Roosevelt High and, and my colleague from southeast, and, and people that I never knew and never thought I would know. Never did I expect this journey to take me to where I am right now. And it's, it's a phenomenal run, and I'll address that more a little bit later. But I want to thank each and every one of you for being patient with me and showing me, mentoring me. Steve was the president before Oliver. And Oliver, you guys took me under your, under your wings, so to speak, and showed me the ropes. You guys need a little more deodorant, I might add, under those wings. But anyway, I appreciate all the, the help and cooperation from this group. And we did have, we do have the blah, blah, blah award. We also have the brevity award. And the brevity award is a toss-up, because you said two words. No, Steve, no. So brevity award for Ditto. And then Sal was most quiet, as he often is. So I have to share that award. And I guess I'll give myself the blah, blah, blah award. So thank you all very much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you all very much. All right. All right, folks, we're going to start our ceremonial swearing-in now. And it's an honor and a privilege to welcome our, another sixteen, that's what we call ourselves, we are the sixteen kids. And Steve Brandow, Madam Clerk is ready. We're going to swear you in for four more glorious years. It's been great.
So while Yvonne's walking down here to swear me in, first of all, I can have, can I have my mom and dad come up here with me? When I do that, all right. Mom and dad, you guys will come up. I just want to thank, gosh, there's a lot of people to thank and probably be given more opportunities to that today. I don't want to look at the mayor, because I'll go starting to thank her, and I'll get sidetracked. I want to thank the citizens of District Two for electing me for four more years. They didn't have an option. I ran unopposed. So it, it made, it made life easy. But it's been a blessing serving the city of Fresno. I really would say that I've made some mistakes up here. And it's, and I'm trying my very best to serve the city of Fresno, and the citizens of District Two, but the, the city in general. And so I want to thank everybody for being patient with me for the last four years. And I'm going to have four more years to go to do my best to serve all of you and your families and our other citizens. So with that, I want to thank everybody. And...
You will have more comments from the dais as soon as we finish our swearing-in. But so that, you're close to the blah, 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 though. Anyway, here are your biggest two fans, if they'd like to step up here beside you. And Madam Clerk, if you administer the oath.
I'm going to try to stand out of the way so we can get photos and everything. So Steve, if you will, raise your right hand. I'm going to read the oath of office to you. And once I'm finished, if you would please respond with "I do" or "I will," okay? All right. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely and without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter? Thank you. Can I congratulate you first?
All right. Next up would be myself. And joining me would be my mother, Helen Capriolio. Please come up. My beautiful daughter, Lauren Alexandria Capriolio. And the great woman behind a good man, my wife, Ron DiCapriolio.
Okay, great. Please raise your right hand. I'll read the oath. When I'm done, would you please respond with "I do" or "I will"? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely and without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter? Great. Congratulations.
Now, that's what the greatness for me is for these ladies right here. I love them so much. All right, next will be Member Gary Butterfield. Please come up to be sworn in, bring your family and friends. Here's an old friend of mine, Judge Callan Carron. Good to see you, sir. Thanks for being here. Thank you. Congratulations, congratulations. We'll have more comments once we return up here to the dais. And I'll go up there and we'll continue the program. Give us one second. All right, folks. Now, at this time, the new council members take their new seats. And the clerk's office, Todd here, will change the nameplates, which I think he's completed. So Gary will be coming up, and Louise is here in our thoughts and prayers. And then after this, Sal, you'll have an opportunity for your remarks and comments. All right, we're all seated. So Sal, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Outgoing President. I appreciate that. You know, before I begin my speech, I, I wanted to share with you a little story. I just, this morning, when I was, during the breakfast, I was speaking with Chairman of the Board, Buddy Mendez. And I said, I said, "So how's it been going?" He says, "You know, I got a call this morning. And a farmer in Riverdale called me, said there was a blond-haired lady and three guys running through the orchard picking oranges and taking some crates." And I said, "Oh, well, that's the spirit of cooperation that the city's looking for with the county. And that's why you see the decorations here this morning. They came from Riverdale, Supervisor Mendez." That's a great, great start. It's a great start. I think the other person that was, the people that were with the mayor were Mayor-elect Brand and Supervisor Borges was probably one of them in there, running around as well. So it's a, it's a great start. Well, first and foremost, I want to say thank you to my Lord Jesus for leading me to this beautiful building, serving the people and the city I truly love. Secondly, I want to say thank you to my sweetheart, Hope, for saving me and encouraging me to continue pressing forward, all the while standing by my side. I love you. As I reflect on my service, I recall when I was first elected, I was interviewed by Jackie Ryle, Fresno City Clerk at that time, who asked me, "What do you hope to..." Jackie Ryle, Fresno City Clerk at that time, who asked me, "What do you hope to accomplish during your time on the council?" My reply was, "I hope that when I leave, Fresno will be a better city than when I first arrived on the council." I truly believe that Fresno is a better city. For the record, I served under two forms of government, three mayors, I've lost count of how many city managers, and worked with countless council members. So I speak from experience. Why do I believe Fresno has become a better city? Over the years, I've been a part of voting on many plans, projects, ordinances, growth, mall renovations, ballparks, gap distribution centers, Fancher Creek Shopping Center, garbage, sewer, water surface treatment plants, to name a few. Some were good, some not so good. For me, the common denominator are the votes, for me, the common denominator of many of the votes was our great city employees and the departments they represent. They're the ones that work the long hours, oftentimes, to meet deadlines on more issues than you or I could ever imagine. They're the ones that continue to make Fresno a better city. They're the graffiti team, the streets team, solid waste, the paralegals, risk management, our secretaries, inspectors, code enforcement, city clerk's office, police, fire, attorneys, our budget analysts, information services department, parks and rec, our plant checkers, our water conservation, our finance department, purchasing, public works, public utilities, planning, transportation, housing, community development, airports, central printing. And maybe a lot of you didn't realize how many departments are in the city of Fresno, and how, how, how much work it takes to run these departments and the work that our employees do. It's often said that in a political environment, we have many acquaintances but few friends. I beg to differ. I live, I leave City Hall with a rich, with a rich and, as a rich and blessed man, rich for the many employees I can truly call lifetime friends, and many times watched out for me and helped me succeed in finding solutions for issues I thought were impossible. To my City Hall family, I say thank you. I will miss working with you, hearing about your families, and just hanging out with you and visiting with you. I love you all. I leave, I leave a blessed man, thanking the voters for their confidence in supporting me to represent them. To all past and city, and present city employees, mayors, council members I served with, it has been an honor, and I thank you for allowing me to live my dream as a, as a public servant. As for me, the next chapter begins, it's happily titled, "The Life and Times of Supervisor Quintero and His Sweetheart Hope." Thanks for the memories.
Hopeful, Sal. Thank you, Sal, we will forever be grateful for your service, Sal. All right, we're gonna have, at this time, comments by the incoming council members, and we'll start with Member Brandau, and then I'll make some comments to Member Butterfield.
Thank you, Council President. Well, I, I really jumped the gun and said most of my comments already, but, so, just to reiterate, I'm really thankful to be here. Like Sal, I thank, I thank God to be here. It's a privilege to be here, and I appreciate the opportunity, so, I love working with everybody here. We have disagreements, but so far, we've really, we've really, and my belief, even when I've lost votes, we're moving the city of Fresno forward, and so, I'm, I'm really looking, Bruce, I'm looking at you right in the eye, I don't know why, but, but I really appreciate the staff of the city of Fresno, those people that put in their lifeblood also, not just, just like the elected folks do, to make our city better. And so we have a lot of challenges, we've overcome a lot of challenges, thank you, Mayor. But we still have some challenges, and we're gonna, we're gonna work those out. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Member Brandau. Welcome. And we'll have four more years together, my brother, yes. Well, for me, I wanna welcome everyone to my home. At least this is my home for the next four years, Fresno City Hall. And I'm thrilled to be here, to share this moment with all of you, and I wanna thank all of you for your encouragement, your support, and most importantly, for your friendship during the past four years, and I look forward to that in the next four years. I wanna give special thanks to my mother. She is ninety years old, going on about forty-five. Her energy level is incredible, and of course, without you, Mom, I wouldn't be here, as the old cliche is. And my mother and my dad, who passed away, it'll be nine years and twenty-one days, his anniversary. So, I wanna just say that they taught me so much, they encouraged me to reach for the stars, they taught me discipline, respect, never to quit, never to give up, and never seek accolades, to appreciate the simple things, establish family values, and most importantly, to have fun. And I love you, Mom, and I could go on for hours, you know that. So, a round of applause for my mother, please. And next, the First Lady is here this evening, or afternoon, or morning, the First Lady is here, the First Lady of District Four, my wife Rhonda Chavez Capriolio, we've been married for twenty-four years. She and I have two beautiful children, John Paul, who's twenty-two, he can't be here today, he's in San Diego going to college, and he's playing baseball down there, pursuing his dream and shooting for his stars, and the things that I've been taught, we've taught him and my beautiful daughter Lauren as well, she's nineteen, and she's a freshman, sophomore, sorry, honey, sophomore, at Fresno State, she's a Delta Gamma, how's that, how does that go? There's a symbol for that. You know I've gotta embarrass you, darling, I love you so much. So, you know what, these people, all these people, especially my, my wife and my daughter have supported me every day. This job is a part-time job, don't ever, don't ever believe that. This is totally full-time, and you have a few moments for your other interests in my law business, I try to maintain, but this is really a full-time job, and they support me every day. I'm not home a lot, especially this last year, because I'm, like Clint said, we're cutting ribbons, we're attending events, we're doing all sorts of things on behalf of the city of Fresno, and it's an honor and a pleasure for me to be able to do that. So I thank you for that support, that love, and that encouragement, I wouldn't be here without it from, from you guys. Next, you know, anyway, I wanted to thank Laura Rios, she's standing over there, my guardian angel, my left hand, my right hand, most of my brain, a lot of my heart, she is just phenomenal, I couldn't be where I am today without you either. So Laura, thank you very much, a round of applause, please. And I wanted to join Sal in thanking my co-employees. All of us up here are co-employees with everyone that works for the city of Fresno, and we work for the city of Fresno, and we are just the same as everybody else, co-employees striving to do the best we can for our community and our city of Fresno. So, I wanna thank, again, my co-employees for their hard work and their diligence, and we'll never let our bosses down, and who are our bosses? The voters, the voters of the city of Fresno. Finally, to the residents of Fresno and to my district, District Four, I pledge, I strongly pledge, that I will continue my common sense approach of developing sound policies that will bring Fresno forward and forward each and every day. So with that, I thank you for your faith and trust in me, and it's an honor and a privilege to serve for the city of Fresno on this fantastic council. Thank you very much. Member Butterfield?
Well, this is unbelievable, I mean, Sal Quintero is sitting here, and when I served on the council sixteen years ago, Sal Quintero sat right here with me, it's like flashback a little bit. It's, it's amazing to be back again. First of all, I wanna thank everybody who's here. I mean, I know you all have things that you have to do and places you need to be, and you came here to share this with us today, so I wanna thank you very much for taking the time out to do that. You know, we have a lot of important issues facing our city. We, in northeast, we've had a water issue, we have to continue to obviously resolve that, and I think we're gonna do that pretty quickly and address some of the issues for some of those folks out there. We've gotta continue to beef up our police department, we've gotten hit hard in recession, and we've got more police officers, but we've gotta do a lot better in terms of fighting crime and public safety, which obviously is the number one issue for all of us while we're here. Gotta beautify the cities, gotta make sure Caltrans does what it's supposed to do, and I think all of us have to have a strong voice to make sure we clean this city, so that when people go through the city and traverse it, they don't see what they see now, and that's gonna be a priority for me. We've made a lot of strides with the homeless, we need to continue our efforts and help those who truly need the help, and we need to continue to improve the economic climate here in Fresno. Tremendous work that's taken place, and I wanna be a positive force to help that. One thing I wanna say, before I thank a lot of people, is I'm in, I'm in, an unabashed supporter of the police department. I'm going to be an unabashed supporter of the police department. These people are protectors, they get up every day, they put on the uniform, the blue uniform, and they protect us. They don't know if they're gonna run into trouble, they don't know if they're gonna be hurt, their families don't know that, and I think as a citizen, and I've been watching over the last several years, as all of you have, the attacks that have been taking, that have been occurring on the police. I intend to be a very strong voice in support of the police. I hope that does not continue to happen here, whether it's a political attack for political reasons, or it's an actual physical attack. These folks are defenders, and I don't like what's happened in, in the country, and I intend to be a very strong supporter for our law enforcement. I intend to make sure they have the resources to do their job, and do it well, and to serve the public well, but I think they also have a right to go home to their families and be safe. So, that's something that I'm going to be speaking out about as issues come before our council. I wanna thank a lot of people, 'cause none of us would be here without the support of a lot of people. I have friends here, I wanna thank them for all of their support, all of the volunteers who helped with our campaign, all of the community groups and leaders in our community who helped, I wouldn't be here without them. Mayor Swearingen was, was an early supporter, and I can't thank her enough, first of all, I can't thank her enough for all she's done for this community for eight years. I think frankly, she's been one of our best mayors that I've ever been witness to. Without her, I think the financial situation would have become dire, and it certainly was dire, and it would have gone in a negative direction if we didn't have her leadership and stewardship, and as I've told her personally, I think she can go down in history as one of our best mayors. So thank you for that, Chief, that mayors, Swearingen. As Paul and Steve have alluded to, I mean, we are given a sacred trust when we're elected to the council or any elected body, it's truly a privilege and an honor, it was when I served before, it's an incredible honor today. I will never forget who I represent, and I represent my constituents. Certainly, there are people here who have special interests, and everybody has a right and a voice to be heard, but every decision I make will always be what's best for the people, not only in District Six, but the entire city. And I'm honored, once again, to have been given the privilege to represent people and serve them well. And we have a great staff, Nicole Demir and Danny Guy, and some of you who work here will get to know them, but they're gonna represent the people very well as well. I wanna thank my, my family, I have a tremendous family. I have four children, Jordan and Derek, who just graduated law school and passed the bar, and I have Amy, who, believe it or not, works for Disney, making children's animated movies, actually is involved in making the movies, actually gets screen credits when it's over, she's an amazing, talented young lady. And Demi, who is married to Jordan, is a teacher in Texas at Illinois Jordan, and a wonderful family, incredibly supportive. I have a twin brother, yes, there's another one that looks exactly like me, he's not here, he's in Southern California, but I love him dearly as I do my other brother and sisters and stepmom, and they've been obviously incredibly supportive for me. Most importantly, I have to, to talk about my wife. I met my wife when I came out here, after I came out here to get my doctorate, I was twenty, twenty-three years old, and I met, met her in nineteen eighty-three, we met one night, and four months later, we were married. She, as I knew it, she may not have known it, but I knew she was the one for me, and she has been through everything with me, everything. When I came out here, I came from New York, some would say that I was a little brash, some would say I'm probably still a little brash, got a lot of rough edges, she has certainly softened those edges through the years. And when I met her, she was a teacher, had her own home, and she had my daughter Amy, who was six at that time, and what I had was a nineteen seventy-two Plymouth Satellite, that's what I had. And it came from New York, and if you looked at the floorboard, it was missing part of the floorboard, you could actually drive the car and see the car, the road beneath you. That's what I had, and that's all I had. And I was going to school, and she took a chance on me, and we've been together ever since, and she's always supported me. After I graduated with my doctoral program in nineteen eighty-five, I came to her and said, you know, "I wanna join the Navy, I wanna serve this country," which means we'd leave Fresno, she's from Fresno. I obviously wasn't, but of course, I've been here now almost forty years, because I love this community. And she said, "Whatever you need to do," and so we went to the Navy, and we served for three years, and we came back to Fresno. And then I said to her, "Well, you know, I also wanna learn to fly." So I started flying and got an instrument rating, and so she dealt with all of that fear of me being behind the controls and actually being in clouds and trying to land the plane. She's always been incredibly supportive. And then one day, I said to her, "You know, I wanna run for political office, I wanna do something bigger, I enjoy working with people, but I think I can help people much more in the public arena." And, you know, frightened her, but she supported me, and she's always been there for me with everything, everything. And only three and a half years ago, I unfortunately got the news that many people don't like to hear, is that I had cancer. And, you know, the words in sickness and health are words until you have to live it, and she lived it. We went through that, it was tough, I feared I was gonna die, I'm, I'm blessed to be here today. And she was with me through it, two years ago, actually, two days from tomorrow, I had a surgery at Stanford, seven hours to remove the cancer, and I've been cancer-free since then. And so I hope, obviously, that I continue to remain healthy, I am very healthy now, and I hope I continue. But I love that woman, I'm passionate about her, I'm passionate about my family, and I'm passionate about this city, and you will see that over the four years, the passion that I have for this city. So I wanna thank all of you for being here, thank all of the people who supported us, all of the people in District Six, and my family and friends, thank you.
Thank you very much, Gary. Next, we'll have the election of a new council president. Member Brandau.
Thank you, thank you, Council President, and, so this is where we nominate the next council president?
Yes.
All right. I would like to nominate my colleague Clint Olivier to be council president, and my colleague Esmeralda Soria to be vice president for two thousand seventeen.
I'll second that motion. First, we have to take this out to the public, is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment on this item? Please come forward. We can always get a recount, Lee. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it up to the dice here, others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Passes seven, zero. Congratulations. I'm sorry, six, one.
I'm sorry, six zero.
How do we do that with a pen here? Are we muted?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
At this time, we will hold the election of the chair and vice chair to the successor agency, to the redevelopment agency of the city of Fresno.
Council president?
Yeah.
I'd like to nominate my colleague Oliver Baines to be the chair of the successor agency, and my colleague Esmeralda Soria to be the vice chair of the successor agency.
I'll second that.
Okay, at this time, we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. No one has punched up, so we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, members Baines and Soria. At this time, it's okay to clap, sure. Now, it's an unknown and unsung function of these council members, but they do work hard in that capacity. All right, at this time, I just kind of wanted to piggyback a little bit off what Member Brettafeld was talking about in terms of what spouses do, and I know that your wife, Susan, has done so much for you, and many spouses and moms have helped us get to where we are today, and we're very, very grateful for that. Because today is a special day of recognition, it shouldn't just be for the folks who are elected to do this, because I know many, many nights I go home and I'm not in, it's difficult to make the transition from councilperson to dad and husband, and there's that hour or so period where you have to put this to bed and pick up and be who you need to be for the people who love you. And so it's for that reason that we wish to recognize some very special people, and I apologize in advance if we put you on the spot, but when I call your name, if you could stand to be recognized, we have, in honor of Mayor Brand, we have the Roosevelt High School cheerleaders here who are going to be delivering special tokens of appreciation. The first person in District Two, and this is for our incoming and returning council members, the first person we want to recognize is the woman who gave us and supported council member Steve Brandau, who's been such a fantastic support for him, and I know he loves and cares for you very, very much. That's his mom, Lorna Brandau. Would you please stand to be recognized? And also, and just also wanted to thank Barry Brandau, Steve's dad. Thank you so much for being here today.
Council president?
Yes.
Point of order, I'd also like to recognize my brother and my niece Bethany, my brother Jeff. A guy kind of looks similar to me, Jeff, if you'd stand up and verify that. Okay. So I guess, he's probably the one guy in the room I have to watch my Ps and Qs with, so thank you, council president.
Steve, I heard he's a better golfer, too. Is that true?
Our next, the next people we'll be recognizing is, congratulations to District Four, council member Paul Capriolio on reelection, and to Steve as well. Rhonda Capriolio, Steve's wife, I mean, Cap's wife, and also his mom Helen. Will you stand, please? We have something for each of you. Thank you. Oh, and then also for Helen here. She gets a bouquet. There we go. And also Susan Brettafeld. Where are you, Susan? Thank you for being a source of support for Gary. And we don't want to forget Trish Brand. Trish, we have a very big bouquet for you. There we go. Round of applause for Trish, please. There we go. Also wanted to recognize the elected officials who are here today. We have incoming Fresno County Supervisor, and just hold your applause until the end, and if you'd like, wave when I call your name. Incoming supervisor, Sal Quintero. We have John Anderson representing Senator Anthony Canela. We have the chairman of the county board of supervisors, Buddy Mendez. Supervisor incoming and former mayor of Clovis, Nathan Magzig. We have Brittany Watson representing Senator Andy Vaidak. We have the mayor of Kingsburg with us today, Michelle Roman. We have the, a member trustee from the State Center Community College District, Richard Caglia is here with us, and also Fresno County Supervisor from District Two, Andreas Borges is with us. Can we give them a round of applause, please? And I've just been informed that trustee Miguel Arias is with us, also from the community college board, and we're joined by former city council members Larry Westerland and Tom Boyajin. Thank you all for coming today. At this time, if council wants to join me at the lectern, we're going to present gifts to Mayor Swearengen. Following the presentation of gifts to Mayor Swearengen will be her farewell remarks, and then we'll administer the oath of office to Lee Brand. Mayor Brand will make an inaugural address, and then we'll adjourn. We presented gifts to the spouses of the incoming and returning city council members today, but one person who goes unrecognized all too often is Paul Swearengen. And Paul Swearengen, the husband, of course, of outgoing mayor Ashley Swearengen. Round of applause, please. Paul, come on up. Paul, I know, turn around, I know you don't like the political spotlight, anyway. Paul's an accomplished preacher, but the political limelight he reserves for his wife, Mayor Swearengen. The reason why we're doing this, it says, "Thank you from the citizens of Fresno," and we know you like baseball and you like sports, you're an accomplished broadcaster as well, but we wanted you to have something, because, I mean, if you think about it, when you're elected to something, especially in the city of Fresno, where we're, it's two lanes in and two lanes out, and we're our own media market, and we get a lot of the spotlight and we get a lot of criticism, imagine what's that, what that's like, to have your spouse blown up on social media. Imagine what's that, what that's like to see an editorial about the woman you love saying that she's remiss in her duties, or not doing a good job, or needs to do more, or stinks on, no, in the newspaper and on social media. And imagine, in the comment section in the B, right? Imagine the grace and the restraint that you would have to use if you were this person, and it goes for all of our significant others as well, but especially for this man here, because Mayor Swearengen has done a lot of good for us, but she has been a lightning rod in this city on many issues, and it's because of, I'm crediting the strength and the grace and the wisdom of Paul Swearengen for allowing her to serve us from the city of Fresno. Thank you for the support and the grace that you've provided to your wife, and it has benefited all of us. So thank you. Mayor Swearengen, will you come up, please? And we're, all the council members will say something now, and then we have a couple of gifts for her. Mayor Swearengen, I first met you at your home in your backyard when I was a news reporter, and I came to cover the announcement of her candidacy, when she determined she was going to run for this seat. And I remember, we needed to go to a quiet or isolated place in the backyard so that we could do an interview away from people, and as, you have a dog or pets, and I remember, I knew that this lady had a very good sense of humor. When we were walking through the grass, she'd say, oh, watch out for the, for the dog poo. And so, so Ashley and I, did I step in? I've stepped in it many times. And I remember going through, I mean, there wasn't a lot, but we walked through and we did the interview. The financial health of this city collapsed either right before or right after she took office. And the city of Fresno, the fifth largest city in California, was going down the tubes. I have, I could talk for a lot, a long time about the things that you've done for me personally, the things that you've helped the constituents I represent, but I think that, I think that your legacy here will be making the tough decisions, the tough choices, and leading us out of the valley of red ink and saving this organization from bankruptcy. It wasn't easy. That's when the B comment section was probably at its high watermark, but you did it, and you were strong, and you were graceful, and we thank you for your service. Thank you. So we have, let's, we'll present the gifts, the, is there a large plaque?
Oh, right here.
Oh, it's right here. So for Mayor Swearengen, it's, it's her dais plaque from when she joins us up on the dais. We had that framed for her to take with her to her next assignment, and it will always remind you of your wonderful time here and the people who come to your office. So that's on behalf of the city and the council as well. And in the green box here?
Blue.
The blue box.
Tiffany, aqua.
Very specific blue.
Tiffany, aqua.
Tiffany blue.
This is a little something extra. It's a mantle clock. I mean, you're welcome to open it and show people if you want, but it's a, I guess I just ruined that, didn't I? Oh, it's a, anyway, it's just another something special from all of us and the entire city. This is a gift, it's been engraved with your name on it, and something that you can have in your home for many, many decades to come, and so thank you very much.
Well, they handed me the mic, so I got to talk. I'll be brief, I've had a, this is yours, too, it has a nice little booklet that goes with it. Tiffany, so they give you all kinds of stuff. You know, I want to join in many respects, Mayor, with Clint's comments about you, and probably all of us could go on for a long time, and I try my best to not do that, but I said, I said earlier a couple of times how fortunate I feel to serve in this city alongside my colleagues, and I consider you a colleague, as you know. The mayor and I actually, she's actually a very close friend of mine, funny enough. I mean, we've become friends over the six years of my service here for all the right reasons. I think we share a very similar heart, we share a very similar faith, a very similar passion. Our mayor, fantastic public servant, a heart for the people of the city like many of you just can't even possibly fathom. She laid it all on the line for all of you and for us. When council member Olivier talked about her guiding us out of, you know, really dark times, the strength and fortitude that it took, you were the right person at the right time that this city needed. You, I am convinced that it was God that put you here to lead us out of that, because I couldn't imagine anyone else. You know, we say that, and it just sounds like words, but it's so very true. The long hours, the very tough decisions, our mayor had to come in, I wasn't here when it first started, but she had to really make the decisions to cut a third of our workforce, an awful, awful thing that she hated to do, but she had to do it to save the city. The decisions that they had to make early on, that council member Brand, and I see my friend Supervisor Borges back there was a part of that, tough, tough decisions that many of us would hate to have to make. She did that on our behalf. Our mayor has, is, has tremendous strength and fortitude, so when she decides she's going to do something, it happens. I'm going to just tell you, it's like a force and a will that all comes together, and you never stop. Your relentless pursuit of what you believe is right on behalf of our residents is to be commended. This city's been very fortunate to have you as its mayor. Mayor Brand has really big shoes to fill in a lot of ways. I know, I know he's fully prepared, but you elevated this city to a level of national prominence that it never enjoyed before, and we owe that to you. So this city owes you a great debt of gratitude, and I am so very happy and proud to have served with you. Thank you.
So I have had the pleasure of, over the last, I think, two weeks, to meet with you, to kind of talk, you know, about the end of your term, and I do, again, just want to congratulate you. I've shared my gratitude to you in our conversation, but I think, two years ago, you know, I think at the beginning of the relationship, it may, there may have been some uneasiness, and I've appreciated over the last two years, the relationship that we have been able to work on, and the things that we've been able to accomplish. I think that uneasiness, we were unsure what we would be able to do, but I think that over the last two years, we've been able to work really hard to move the city forward, and I want to commend you again for the work that you've done over the eight years in really having a vision for the city and accomplishing great things, and I think that the fruits of your labor, we will continue to see over the years to come, so I'm grateful for you. And I will also say that, speaking as a councilwoman, it has been nice to actually share, you know, and be in leadership, to see another woman leading our city, and so you will be missed, but, you know, we will, we will call on you when we need your help. So again, congratulations on everything.
Well, Mayor, again, I could add so many more accolades to what's been said and will be said about you. I have three things that come to mind. One, if you ever had the pleasure of accompanying her into Sacramento or to Washington DC, when she walks in a room, it's like a president has arrived. I'm not kidding. She is, it's amazing, the respect that you've garnered, not only for yourself but for our community, and it's, I was just in awe, I still am, in awe of the way you've handled yourself and the way you've conducted business and the great things you've done for the city of Fresno. It's phenomenal. And, you know, we've talked about the hard times, so we've got to talk about the good times, and starting with the surface water treatment plant. That's going to be a lifesaver, game changer for decades after your tenure here, through many, many other things that I hope you address in your remarks, because there's so many. And so the other thing I wanted to comment on was this picture that I found, and it's of Mayor...
That's what she looked like.
This is, this is Mayor Swearengen.
The brunette version.
This is, so I found that, and I thought it was, I wish you all could see the before and the after, because it's, it's, it's all, both are good, just leave it that way, both are good. And then one last story. So the mayor, we had, we had, she wanted to go for a ride in my Carrera, and so she said, let's go to lunch. So we got in the car and hit the button, the top goes down, and so we go over to the sushi place, we have a wonderful lunch, we talk business, we talk other things. And then I said, well, you ready for the real ride? And she goes, her eyes got big, she goes, well, okay. So I put the top up, belted her in, strap it down, and she shakes her head, and so we got on the freeway, and I think I was in second gear at about 94 miles an hour, hit third, whipped it around a turn, came back down, and...
My hair went blonde.
And, I thought about it, going, should go gray after that ride. So we pull into the parking lot, she doesn't say a word, thank you, gets out, comes to her office, and then her confidante, Georgianne Brown, Georgianne White, I'm picking brown here. So Georgianne White, she comes into my office, Cap, Cap, what did you do to the mayor? I go, I didn't do anything. Yes, you did. I go, what do you mean? She says, her hair is straight. It's never been straight, ever. How did you do that? So, but it was a fun, it was a lot of fun for both of us. And the final comment, you know, my family, obviously, is very, very important to me, and I've never had a sister, and her office, like mine, the door is always open, I sometimes just walk in, and she's... just walk in, and she always stops, always talks to me, and you are my sister forever, and I thank you for all the, the things you've brought out in me, and the lessons you've taught me, and the things you've shown me about, not just government, but personal lives and parenting and friendships and all the things that go with it. So you are truly an amazing person, and I will miss you dearly.
All right.
We'll let the president end it. I want to take it a little bit different direction. I do appreciate you saving the city of Fresno in financial crisis, I remember that very well. I think everybody in the room remembers that. And all the things that you've done, I doubt, Ashley, that anybody's clashed with you more than me. Right here, and I, I remember times where there were some quasi-heated exchanges, right? And I wish, I wish you had not given Paul a baseball bat, okay? Could you have given him cotton balls or something, because probably tempted him to take a swing at me a couple of times. But I want to say something about what I've perceived in you, the time working with you, and even really predating my time on council, but especially when I got to know you. Now, the truth is, in all reality, I think we agree on 85% of everything, right? You've been very effective and a great leader for the city of Fresno. People aren't used to hearing me say that, but I've said that to you privately, but I think you're gonna go down in history as one of our greatest, okay? We've clashed a little bit, we have some differences of opinion. One thing I've noticed in those differences, this is very meaningful to me, is that, is that your motive has just always been beautiful, okay? So you've got this wonderful motive, sometimes I disagree, but when I always put myself in check, because I know your motive, you know? That's very meaningful to me. I know that comes from your faith, and you're trying to do the right thing, and, and that's what I believe is gonna make you the best mayor. So I appreciate your time in Fresno, I appreciate serving with you, I even appreciate the tough times, the tough conversations that we've had, this made me a better council member. And so, thank you for your service to our city, Ashley.
Councilmember Brederfeld, do you want to say a few words?
I've already said what, what I think about Mayor Swearengen. I think what Steve alludes to also is, you know, Ashley and I have talked a lot of times, we don't always agree on things, and sometimes, I don't think, we spent much time really talking about issues, but I know this, this person's heart, and I know her integrity, and she is full of integrity. And when you disagree with somebody, but they have a different position, and it comes from one of integrity, and just having a different point of view, I could live with that all day long. The bottom line is, her record will speak for itself, as I said up there, I think she's gonna go down in history as one of the best mayors we've ever had. She has been a friend to me, she's been a mentor to me, and as I went through the campaign, I've often called her and asked for her thoughts, and she is always measured, something I need to learn to do, to be more measured, and she is just phenomenal at that, and she's a tremendous friend, as is Paul. I wish her the best, and thank her for her tremendous service.
And at this time, we turn the lectern over to you.
Wow, thank you, gosh, thank you so much, Council President and members of the City Council, all of you. This has already been an emotional morning, and hopefully I'll make it through the next five or 10 minutes, and, and then we'll get to the celebration of our new mayor, Lee Brand. But I just want to start by telling you how pleased I am to be here, to address the City Council, members of the public, city employees, members of my family, here one last time as the outgoing mayor of Fresno. This is an exciting time, it's a time of transition, it's a time of new chapters, of new commitments and recommitments to steward leadership on behalf of the people of the city of Fresno. You know, this has also been a time of reflection for me, and over the last few weeks and months, I've had a lot of time to think about the journey that we've all been on together over the last eight years, and really even 10 years, when I consider the campaign process dating back to 2006, 2007. So over the last few weeks, I can tell you that I've spent time thinking about how very, very proud I am of all that has been accomplished here in the last eight years on behalf of our residents. It's also been a time to be grateful, and for me to think about all of the people, the staff in my office, the city manager's office, our department heads, their teams, all of our employees, the Fresno City Council, and the countless, literally thousands of people who step forward every day, year after year, to volunteer in our community, and who dedicate so much time to serve the people of Fresno. So I've certainly spent a lot of time being grateful for where we are today, relative to where we are when I started. And then practically speaking, it's been a time of packing, a lot of boxes, a lot of files, a lot of things to go through, and eight years, you compile a lot of mementos and historical documents and files and past policies and binders, so many binders in my office. So I've been cleaning out my office, and as I have been doing so, I found a few things that I wanted to share with all of you here this morning. They seem to represent items that are important, words that are important, as we mark this moment in this transition of leadership in our community. So the first thing I found, and I was surprised to see it, because I didn't even think there was a transcript of this, but I found my inaugural address from 2009, eight years ago, almost to the day, on January 6, 2009, I took the oath of office, and I said some things that I want to reflect back on here today, as I pass the baton to Mayor Brand. I said in my inaugural address that Fresno is not immune from economic hardship, and I promised that morning that we as a city would be more diligent, more efficient, and more aggressive than any other city in doing what needed to be done to weather those difficult financial times. I made that commitment to the people of Fresno, and I said that at the core of that commitment is an unshakable, unrelenting, and insistent belief that Fresno is making its move, that Fresno will be the city that defies the odds and surprises the experts when in four and eight years, we've advanced on our goals despite this economic climate, and that our city, Fresno, will be known as the turnaround city. Now, I believe those words are coming true, and that we're living in an historic era in our city, it's the era of the turnaround of the city of Fresno. I also found, as I was cleaning out my office, this great quote that I love so much, I wrote it on one of my pieces of note paper, under the label, "Great Quotes." Try not to be intimidated by my sophisticated filing system, but this great quote comes from Dr. John Gardner, and those of you probably know that Dr. Gardner was the former U.S. Secretary of Health, Education, and Welfare, he was the 1964 recipient of the Presidential Medal of Freedom, and Dr. Gardner said that "History never looks like history when you're living through it." Now this quote, I want to dedicate to my colleagues on the Fresno City Council. And I want to honor all of you, and I want to thank you for the incredible role that you've played during my time in office. You are history makers. I'm gonna turn and face the council as I say this, and I apologize for my back to the audience, but I want to say this to you. You are history makers, and I sincerely believe that history will record you, this City Council, as the most qualified, the most dedicated, and the most collaborative council that our city has known to date. My hope and my prayer is that you go on from here, and that the next mayor talks about how the next council hit even greater heights than the ones that I've had the pleasure to serve with. I have a few parting gifts for you all to mark this time that we've shared together, and as I have a few words for each of you, I'm gonna ask Cheryl Burns and Miguel Ramirez to hand these gifts out to you. But I want to say each of these things to you personally. I wrote them down so that I would not go too far off script. Beginning with District One Councilmember Esmeralda Soria, Esmeralda, you are dedicated, you are extremely bright, and you are so capable, you are a true advocate for District One. I am grateful to have had the opportunity to work with you, and I look forward to continuing to work with you as you advance in your career, and we continue to work to improve the Fresno area and the valley. District Two Councilmember Steve Brandau, Steve, we've had our differences, but I have never doubted your sincerity and your commitment to doing what you believe is the right thing to do, and for that reason, and many others, Steve, you've earned my deepest respect. I find it really fun to work with you. Thank you for the sparring matches, thank you for not alerting the authorities when I punched you as hard as I could in the shoulder in the council hallway. You barely felt it, and it was all I had. The shouting matches, but most importantly, thank you for the laughter, I will always remember those times. To District Three Councilmember Oliver Baines, I remember the first time we met at Starbucks on De Visadero, when you began your run for City Council. The progress you have made in District Three in the last six short years is remarkable, and it is a testament to your leadership, your skill, your heart, and your passion for your district. It's been a privilege to work with you, and I'm grateful that we'll have the opportunity to continue to work together in the next chapters of our lives. To my brother, District Four Councilmember Paul Capriolio, Paul, I so appreciate the way in which you represent District Four. You love your district, you are so proud of all that District Four offers to our city, and that is clear to me every time I hear you speak about your district, and as I watch you work on behalf of your constituents. Thank you for your leadership, and thank you for your friendship. Outgoing Councilmember Sal Cantero, and new supervisor, City Councilmember from District Five, Sal, you have been a steadfast voice and a steadfast vote for the people of Southeast Fresno. I'm so glad that I got to be a part of six of your 14 years serving as the council member for District Five, and I'm even happier that you'll continue to serve the people of our community in your new post at the county. Best of luck to you. To Councilmember from District Six, Mayor Brand, I'll come back to you in just a moment. And lastly, to District Seven, Council President Clint Olivier, Clint, what a delight it has been to serve with you these last six years. In the time we've worked together, I've come to know you as intelligent, capable, and extremely dedicated to the residents of District Seven. You have brought interesting, relevant, and thoughtful perspectives to every debate we have ever had, and I'm better off for it, as is our community. I'll miss violating the charter and sitting next to you in council meetings as a way to distract you and manipulate your votes. Yeah, right, I'm out of order. I told them, "Don't you let Mayor Brand do that, you bounce him off the dais." They let me get away with it. The next thing I found that I want to share with you is a quote for our new mayor, for Mayor Lee Brand. This quote is from President Lincoln, and it is probably my all-time favorite. Abraham Lincoln said, "Nearly all men can stand adversity, but if you want to test a man's character, give him power." Mayor Brand, over the last eight years, we have had more than our fair share of adversity, and I'm a firsthand observer of how you have handled difficult decisions you passed with flying colors. But more importantly, I've seen how you've been a steward of the power or the authority that's been delegated to you by the residents of District Six and now our entire city. You are fair, even-tempered, you listen to both sides of an issue, and you do not let power go to your head, but instead, you steward that responsibility to the best of your ability to do what you believe is right for the people you represent. That is by far the most important trait in an elected official, and I couldn't be happier to be handing the reins of responsibility for our city to you, Mayor Brand. Now, the last thing I found, and I want to share with you, is this little stack of sticky notes here, and I wrote on this little sticky note, I don't know when this was, probably 2012, 2013, no doubt, a time of adversity, of trying to continue to deal with financial issues, try to pass a new general plan, try to take things in a new direction in the city of Fresno, so no doubt, I wrote this note to myself in a time of adversity. These words today seem appropriate to share with you, as I've been asked frequently, "Well, what do you think your biggest accomplishment is as mayor? What's your legacy? What's your favorite project that you worked on for the last eight years?" What I wrote to myself some years ago answers that question. This note says, "My biggest gift to Fresno is not being satisfied, not being content with the status quo. It's not enough to just balance the budget. My job is to carry the vision of a changed Fresno." To the people of Fresno, I say that it has been the honor of a lifetime to carry the vision of a changed Fresno, and to work every day towards accomplishing that vision on your behalf. And it is now my privilege and my pleasure to, to hand the baton to our city's next great mayor, Lee Brand.
Thank you at this time, I wanted to recognize folks in Fresno County here, we're very fortunate to have with us our District Attorney Lisa Smithkamp, and I forgot you during that time. Thank you.
As usual, you leave me a hard act to follow. I still have to pinch myself sometimes to realize I'm actually here as the mayor of Fresno, because it was a long, long journey for me. Was it a dream? Maybe one day, when I'm walking through the airport, I hear the PA system, I hear myself greeting passengers, "Hi, this is Lee, fly with me." Then I might know I'm the mayor of Fresno. But you've, just off the script, you've done a phenomenal job, you've cast a long shadow that I hope I can only partially feel, to carry on the many things that you did, and you just didn't change this city, you transformed this city, you've laid out the groundwork for me to, to succeed, and I don't have the charisma, I don't have the good looks, I definitely don't have the hair. But I promise you, have no doubt about my effectiveness, no doubt about my courage, and no doubt about my resolve to change this city and to follow in the footsteps of Mayor Swearengen. In many ways, my victory was a victory for every underdog, my victory was for every kid down and out in this city with no future. I tell you, if I did my life, pick yourself up, work hard, and follow your dreams, because you never know where those dreams will lead you. So let me start by first thanking the many people who helped me to get to this point. It was truly a team effort, and I'm gonna just keep it short, because we have another luncheon to go to. I want to thank my wife Trish, who's been with me by my side for 37 years, my oldest daughter Emily, I mean, my youngest daughter Emily, my granddaughter Kylie, my father-in-law Kurt Anderson, my son Tommy Brand, my daughter-in-law Suzie Brand with baby in tow, in two, in one month, right? My son Philip Brand, my brother Gary Brand over there, my oldest daughter Charity could not make it today, and my sister may be on her way, I'm not sure. not make it today, and my sister may be on her way, I'm not sure. I have given my heart and soul to this city for the past eight years. And to be a better mayor, I've sold my interest in my business, West Cove, over 30 years to focus 100% of my energies to make Fresno a better place to live. And today is special because it gives me the chance to lay out my vision for the next four years and to think about the long and challenging road that I have traveled to get to this place, this moment in time, where I humbly accept the honor of serving as Fresno's 22nd elected mayor. And that journey, this is very personal with me, started on a modest two-bedroom, one-bath home at 4005 East McKenzie Street. My family support circle was close with my grandparents, my aunts and uncles across the street. And I was a problem child. I did not do well in school. In sixth grade, my teacher told me I'd end up in prison. And I nearly fulfilled that prophecy two years later in 1964. 1964 was a traumatic year for me. I was arrested at Yosemite Junior High School and taken away in handcuffs. And a few months later, my father died in a tragic airplane accident. And I never had the opportunity to redeem myself to my father. And I was haunted by his untimely death for some time until I was able to forgive him. My only regret is that he's not here today to see this event. And this road has spanned many miles over the past 60-plus years, through military service, through college graduation, business success, and family joy. And the friendships I've gained, the relationships I've built, and the children and grandchildren I have raised, these are the gifts that last a lifetime. I want to thank my dear friend Ashley Swearengen for her leadership and support in passing the torch on through this administration. She's made the transition as smooth and as thorough as possible. Mayor Swearengen and her staff have gone out of their way to provide the tools for my team that will need to be successful. And I wish Ashley you well in your future endeavors. And, excuse me, and I thank her for years of service on the city of Fresno. And I do believe you're one of our greatest mayors.[1354.15][1354.15](applause) I do need some water. I got this cold. I also want to thank my colleagues on the council for your help for the past eight years. I consider all of you close friends. I could not have passed by many initiatives without your collaboration and support. Your courage and passion has inspired me and I look forward to working with you in the months ahead to continue to move forward with this great city. In that same spirit, I want to thank my transition team led by eight Sp's who have given me exceptional advice and I believe we dearly need to be agents of change from business to labor, to clergy to public safety. This diverse collection of life and leadership experience has blended together in a remarkable way. And I'm pleased to announce today officially that I'm changing my transition team to become a permanent mayor's advisory committee that will meet on a regular basis to discuss issues and find solutions. And these men and women who will continue to be leaders in their own respect and a reflection of Fresno's great diversity, we need their voices and their wisdom to help me solve the challenges ahead of us. Let me also express my gratitude to the voters for electing me to be your mayor. I look forward to hearing your ideas and concerns as we work to build on the momentum our city now enjoys. And that momentum can only be sustained through collaboration. And that's a word you can continue to hear for years to come. And collaboration is the key to doing the hard work ahead for our city. And Mark had me do this for you. I took the bottom third off because when you have progressive glasses, you'll get blurred towards the bottom. So thank you, Mark. And now, nowhere is there more need for collaboration than in public safety. And that is why I will create a citizens' public safety advisory board to assist the Fresno Police Department move to community-based policing and provide more transparency and accountability by the department to the people of Fresno. And one of my priorities is to steadily increase the number of on-duty officers to 1,000 and to continue to add firefighters and replace equipment, a plan that is based on developing sustainable funding sources. I'm the numbers guy. I'm proud to play a significant role in balancing our budget, restoring staffing levels, increasing our reserves, and improving our bond ratings. Our city has benefited from the strong and consistent leadership. And we will remain strong and constant in our efforts to complete the restoration of Fresno's economy that began with the Swearengen administration and will continue with the Brand administration. In my Economic Expansion Act, it's a blueprint for creating thousands of new jobs. It calls for the city to take leadership roles in mobilizing finance and venture capital resources for business and supporting for more vocational education that will increase and improve our workforce. Just last month, City Hall celebrated the news that Ulta and Amazon have identified Fresno as their preferred choice for building an e-commerce distribution center that will bring 3,000 new jobs and more importantly, more opportunity and the start of more for the city of Fresno. We must make Fresno business-friendly and finish the work that has already been done to streamline the permitting and plan check process. We must finish the job with an explanation point. And we will complete the master plan for citywide park and trail construction and provide more green space for our citywide. We will continue the steady progress of rebuilding our infrastructure. The election is over now. As of right now, the slate is clean. We are all in this together. This is not labor versus management. This is not police versus citizen. This is not landlord versus tenant. This is the city of Fresno moving forward as one. And I look forward to walking down that long and challenging road together. I usually make these things up and I got to follow the script. I am blessed with a wonderful family, great friends, and loyal supporters. I've traveled a long road from my early days on McKenzie Street and a part of me will always be there. This road has been a physical journey and a spiritual journey. A confluence of events bringing me together with the right people at the right time have given me inspiration and faith that it will lead this city forward. It took every fiber of my being to step out from that small house on McKenzie Street so many years ago and choose a new path. And that would be a path that would lead me to this building, this job, and this moment. And these past eight years on the council have indeed been the time of my life. I cherish every moment and I'm truly honored to have this great responsibility. My colleagues and I, and that includes you, Mayor Swearengen, are forever bound by our bond of public service. History will judge our accomplishments. I give you my vow that I will lead this city with my head, but I will always follow my heart, to bring all the citizens of Fresno together as one. I want to thank you for this incredible opportunity. God bless you and God bless the great city of Fresno.
And with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.[1771.36][1771.36](background noise)[1772.36][1772.36](music)[1773.36]